Okay, good evening, Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, everyone has to announce their location. Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Where are you?
Just a community.
Right here.
Professionally, you're supposed to say in community. I'm not, but if you want me to say one, four, nine, five, six.
Oh, no, no.
Just give us a general idea.
Okay, John's here.
Quick question. Um, trustee Monahan.
Uh, here at Plymouth Township.
Clerk Vorba, Plymouth Township Hall. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here, Plymouth Township.
Trustee Kermy.
Here, Plymouth Township.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here, my home office in Plymouth Township.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here at Township Hall, Plymouth Township.
Okay, we have a quorum. Everyone's here.
Okay, item B is Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, how about Mark Clinton can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll bring the flag up here shortly. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Rules and procedures for remote meeting. Tonight, the township will be utilizing the video/audio conferencing platform Zoom for electronic meetings, which will be accessible to members of the public body and members of the public. I, as the meeting host, will call for public comment during those portions of the meeting and may also ask if there are public comments as each agenda item is being discussed, if those items are relevant and germane to the item before the board. Members of the public participating in the electronic meeting who wish to speak during public comment or on an agenda item or at a public hearing should use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you dialed into the meeting, use star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand, but only after the meeting host has called for comments. Pressing star nine on a telephone keypad will activate the raise hand feature, signaling to the meeting host that a participant wishes to speak. Participants will be called upon one at a time, as would happen during an in-person meeting. The participant will be acknowledged by name, if available, or by the last four digits of the participant's phone number. The participant will have three minutes to share comments with the public body. At the conclusion of the participant's comments or the allotted three minutes, the participant will be muted or requested to mute themselves. Participants calling in should use star six on a telephone keypad to mute and unmute themselves when called upon by the meeting host to do so. Uh, as I said earlier, I'm here at Plymouth Township Hall. With me is Bob Jenks, who is our IT Director. He will be serving, as always, as our, as our engineer here tonight to make sure that everything's running smoothly. And I would also ask that everyone participating tonight turn off silence, any phones, computers, laptops, any other devices that you may have. Okay, we're going to move on to item D, approval of tonight's agenda. Any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Supervisor.
Uh, Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Item E is approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions by the board?
I, I have a question on the, the building report. Has Henry Ford Hospital started the construction of an outbuilding? Outlot A is what it says in the report, building report, or is that the actual hospital?
Well, if that's referring to outlot, I'm going to assume that that may be the, um, the contemplated buildings on the corner of Hagerty and Ann Arbor Road. Uh, there may be some preliminary drawings that people are looking at, but there's been no shovel in the ground yet, although the ground has been cleared and graded. So that may, that may, if that constitutes construction, I don't know.
This says in January, a permit was issued for a million dollars of construction value. Well, all right. All right, I'll, I'll ask the building department tomorrow.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item F is public comment, limited to three minutes. Uh, there will also be another public comment time at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone in the public at this time who wishes to speak? I am not seeing any hands. Going once, going twice. Very good. We're going to move on to new business. Item G one is the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the two thousand and twenty-one improvements to Township Park. Uh, this is a standard procedure. Whenever we are receiving grant money from Wayne County, this year, the county has allocated sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars to Plymouth Township, and we would like to use that money to help refurbish the walking track at Township Park. This intergovernmental agreement will allow us to receive these funds from the county. By, with our approval tonight, we will then forward this agreement to the county, where it will be approved by the County Commission and signed by the CEO. That process usually takes about two to three months, but we are already beginning work on the, uh, the walking track project because we did allocate funds for this, uh, in the two thousand and twenty-one budget, and this will help reduce our overall costs. Any other comments or questions?
Off the timeline and what we're doing, uh, and when do we have to spend the money by?
Well, we're going to spend the money this year, and I'm going to have Jeremy Schroth answer, uh, the other questions. Township Engineer.
The plans are complete for the Township Park, uh, project, and it's already been advertised. So we're hoping for bids here towards the end of the month, beginning next month.
That was going to be my question. Jeremy, maybe you can help me out on that one. With the overall project cost to be fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three, were bids already taken? I mean, how did that, how did we arrive at that number?
We had an engineer's estimate that we put together before, and that's what we sent over for requesting funds from the county to begin with.
Do we, uh, if we don't use, if, if they give us, Wayne County gives us sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five, which is noted also in the contract on page three, not to exceed that amount. What do we do with the, the difference between what we use and what they gave us?
With the total, the total project itself is, is closer to a hundred and fifty thousand. The sixty-four thousand is the reimbursement directly from Wayne County for that project. So we'll be planning on utilizing the entire sixty-four thousand.
Okay.
It helps reduce our cost, and we can use that, we can either put that money back in general fund, or we could spend it on something else with a proper, uh, budget reallocation.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anybody in the public? Then I'll entertain a motion. We have a hand. Mary Ann McLaren. Are you out there? We're gonna, we're gonna let you in here. Mary Ann. You're still muted. Of course, how would she know that if she's muted?
A minute. Okay, now I'm good, right?
There you are.
Okay, Mary Ann McLaren, four, 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 seven, one, Mark Trail. As a citizen who uses the park and walks it a lot, and also as a member of the Environmental Leadership Commission, I definitely agree that their dire need of path improvement. Hopefully, they'll be able to take care of what's going on with the soil erosion and water, especially on the east side, with that being such a steep hill and everything that's really been washing away. And is there anything going to be done to make it ADA compliant?
Jeremy.
Uh, yeah, we're going to try to make as many improvements as we can. Some of those areas are extremely steeped and would require a lot more excavation and a lot more cost to get to that point. But as much as we can fix, we're going to fix. We've got, the majority of it is going to be an overlay, which is just basically putting an additional course on top of it. And then we've identified a few areas that need to be fully removed and replaced out there.
Yeah, okay. Is it going to be made wider?
No, it'll match the existing cross-section that's out there now.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else? Very good, then I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move in accordance with the resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero-two dash oh-nine dash oh-nine. I authorize a supervisor and clerk to sign the inter-agency agreement between Wayne County and Plymouth Township for improvements in the Township Park.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dorchevitz. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, the adoption of the poverty exemption guidelines. Um, we do have with us tonight Tracy Haley, who is, works for WCA. That is our assessing consultants, and if we could bring her on board this chat.
I can, Kurt, I can go through this, and Tracy will back me up if I, uh, can't answer any questions.
Well, we do have Tracy here with us tonight, but Mark, if you could kick us off, and then Tracy can answer any other questions that we may have. Well, and she's on, on the line now. Yep.
Yeah, thanks. This is, uh, earlier this year, the state of Michigan passed Public Act two fifty-three of two thousand and twenty, which made changes to the poverty exemption statute. And this necessitated all of the municipalities to update their poverty exemption guidelines and get those approved by a February fifteenth deadline of this year. These guidelines will be used for the border review coming up in March, evaluating whether or not applicants will be, um, eligible for poverty exemption within Plymouth Township. Now, bear in mind, we just don't see this a lot, right? We get about less than five applications per year. The last one that we actually granted was in two thousand and eighteen. So this is not something that's going to impact a wide array of people within the township. But regardless, we still have to update our guidelines per the, the state's requirements and give those to the board of review so they know what, uh, guidelines they're using to evaluate the applications. The vast majority of the guidelines are dictated by the state. Really, it comes down to that we have to use, there are two options that we have to put in there. The first option is, um, what the, um, what the exemption will be, whether it'll be twenty-five percent of the taxable value, fifty percent of the tax about, of the taxable value, or a hundred percent of the taxable value. And you'll see that in our guidelines, we're recommending fifty percent. Why fifty percent? Because, uh, if you are granted a poverty exemption, you can go back to the state to request reimbursement for up to fifty percent. That's my understanding. So if we granted a hundred percent, we would be subsidizing. Where if we grant fifty percent, we grant fifty percent, the state reimburses the other fifty percent. So that seems to make a lot of sense to me. The other, uh, option we have to determine is if we require our applicants to reapply every year, or we allow the, uh, the decision to stand for one, two, or three years. And we're recommending that they reapply every year. Again, why? Because circumstances change. You know, you could, you could win the lottery, you could have somebody move in you, you know, in with you, your, your child or, or, or somebody else that will then add to the, uh, income of the household. So we're requiring that, if you are granted, that you have to reapply every single year. Those are the two variables. Uh, everything else is pretty much mandated by the state. Tracy, did I, you're muted, but, uh, if I missed anything of importance, please unmute and let me know.
Um, the only major change for us, uh, with us, as well as what Mark has already touched on, is the state taking away the board's ability to deviate from the guidelines. There is no more deviations for any special circumstances. They would either qualify or not qualify. But other than that, Mark's touched on everything.
Hey, any other questions from the board?
Yes, uh, page. I think it's one of our summary that starts with purpose. Point number three. Tell me when you're there. It says, if the application is not complete or requested documentation is not included, the border review will deny the exemption. I recommend we change the word will to may. Uh, we need to have the border review have some latitude. Most of these people will not be very, in many cases, very organized or literate. So we may have to coach them a little or have some border review input.
Tracy, is that allowed by statute?
No, it does not.
Are you a hundred percent sure?
These, the guidelines were given from the state tax commission. I am ninety-nine point nine percent positive.
When you, so you say the word will is in the state tax commission document?
It's under the MCL two eleven seven U is my understanding.
Will deny the exemption.
Yes.
Well, if it's not a perfect application, it will be denied by state law? I guess I find, I find that hard to believe.
The application gives portions on it, or if it does not apply to the taxpayer, they simply have to fill in NA is not applicable. And the staff at the assessing office, we are happy to help any petitioner come in and fill out the forms to make sure they are filled out entirely prior to going to the board, which has happened even prior to this change.
Well, I'd like you to send out an email tomorrow or when you're ready to reconfirm what you've just said. Please.
Okay.
Is that saying the border review has no latitude?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Uh, the next one, this is probably for you, Tracy, also. These documents have social security numbers that are highly confidential. What is your process to ensure that none of it leaks out?
It would be the same process as with, um, filing of a principal residence exemption. It is considered public information, but if somebody came in to request those documents, all social security numbers, anything private would be blacked out prior to those documents being copied.
So you're saying that I could FOIA somebody's tax return who filed for a state, uh, for a poverty exemption?
Correct. However, a lot of the information on that form that would be provided to you would be blacked out due to the social security number.
Well, just, what about the amounts?
No.
So the amount would be available.
Information.
I'm sorry, say again?
That is public information. That's the basis of the decision, so that is public.
Okay. I guess if somebody comes forward, they need to understand that. Probably need to give, have some guidelines to tell them by making this application, it's going to be public record. Because I don't think most people realize or want to have their, uh, Form ten forty, public record. Some people may say, hey, I'm not going to do it.
All petitions, when it's come to poverty or value appeals, are always public, open to the public. Any items that go to the March Board.
All right, you're not, you're not hearing me. I'm saying, let's tell them that it's going to be public because they may not realize it.
If we have any applicants this year, uh, we most certainly go over that information with them.
Okay, anybody else?
Now, they have a, they have a remedy for that, uh, shot, uh, right underneath there. They can appeal, um, the assessment on the property. So they, if, 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 uh, if what is being said about the application not being filled out in its entirety and, and a assessment is therefore, uh, given, they can appeal that decision to the border review. So they have a remedy.
Wait a minute. I thought this has to go before the border review. That's who decides.
Right, but the, but then on the fourth, the fourth, the fourth line says, per MCL two eleven point seven U seven, a person who files a claim for poverty exemption is not prohibited from also appealing the assessment on the property to the border review in the same year.
But that's a different subject. That's, the assessment has to do with the value of the property. That is not the poverty exemption, has nothing to do with it. Right, Tracy?
Yes, there would be two separate types of appeals, one based on income, and the other option would be to be appealing based on valuation and what is currently going on in the market.
I understand that. My point is, though, is that the, there is still a remedy for a taxpayer. It may not be under the purview of a poverty exemption, but they have the right to review, uh, border review to appeal it.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the value of the property.
Right, I understand.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody in the public? Okay, hearing no further questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Treasurer Clinton.
I move to approve resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero-two dash zero-nine dash ten to adopt the attached poverty exemption guidelines effective with the two thousand and twenty-one tax year as required under Public Act two fifty-three of two thousand and twenty.
Motion's made by Treasurer Clinton. Is there a second? Uh, second by trustee Dorchevitz. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item H is public comment, again, limited to three minutes. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak at this time? I'm looking over at Mr. Jenks. Mr. Jenks does not see anyone. No hands. Okay, okay, gonna move on. Uh, board comments, uh, let's see. We've got, our next meeting is going to be February twenty-third. I'm hoping that this will be an in-person meeting. Uh, there are many opinions flying around all over the place, um, most of them unsolicited. But, uh, hopefully, we can find the, uh, the right path that, uh, will satisfy the, um, rulemakers and, uh, ensure some level of, of safety. Uh, on the February twenty-third agenda, as of now, on the regular agenda, we, we have the annual report from, uh, Hilltop Golf Course Managers, uh, that would be Tony Moscone and his group. Uh, Mark and I met with them via Zoom earlier today, um, and it's going to be, I think, a very good presentation. There, there's been a great deal of success at the golf course, uh, in two thousand and twenty, despite the hazards that we faced by COVID. And, um, I think we've got some very, very good workable ideas for, uh, for improving that course in the years ahead. Uh, and then, as of now, that's the only, uh, regular agenda item. Um, I also just want to give you a heads up that we are more than likely going to have a special meeting on March second. Normally, that would be a study session night, but we may have some things we have to vote on that night that are timely. So as of right now, we are going to, we're looking at doing a presentation by the assessing division. Tracy is still on the line, and Tracy has been waiting to do this presentation now for about a year. It's sort of the assessing one oh-one, what goes into it and what's it all about? So, uh, we could do it, we would do that, that night. Also, I'd like to have a discussion on some amendments to our fee schedules in the building department and, um, uh, well, they're almost all in the building department. So we would bring in, um, Sherry Parmelchuk from the building department, Laura Haw, Kevin Bennett, possibly Pat Felrath, to talk about some suggested amendments to our fee schedules. Um, that is something that we also talked about in our goal analysis a few weeks ago. Maybe, we may be able to award a bid that night, Jerry, for the audio services for the boardroom.
We're hoping to.
Okay. Uh, and then we may also, that night, have to make a, an amendment to the MITC Brownfield Authority Plan, but that is also in the works right now. If we can, if we can cancel the special meeting on March second, we will. But, uh, I think that there's still some items that, that deserve discussion. Um, and if we can throw some, some important votes in there that night, uh, for like audio services, for example, then, then we, uh, we should take advantage of the opportunity. There's nothing else special about the special meeting, other than by calling it a special meeting, we have the right to vote on, on items at that meeting. And that's all I've got.
If you only have one item on February twenty-third, cancel that and put it on March second. Unless you intend to do the economic development on February twenty-third.
I don't know, but I know that we do, the, the, I know the finance department, uh, urges us to have two meetings a month so that we can pay the bills and, and keep things moving along and not hold up our, our vendors and hold up the, the work that's done in, in their office. But again, the special meeting is speculative at this point. If not, it may just end up being a study session, which is, which it was originally scheduled as. Okay, that's all I've got. I'm going to go around the Hollywood Squares here, and I'm going to start with, uh, Mark Clinton.
Um, last week for the tax year, um, since, since, uh, Monday is a, a holiday. Next Tuesday, a week from today, is the final day to pay taxes in Plymouth Township. After that, all taxes not paid will be turned over to Wayne County. So we're winding down another very successful tax year. We figure we've got about fifteen hundred more collections to go, uh, between now and next Tuesday.
Well, Mark, we're allowed to pay at the township between the seventeenth and the twenty-eighth, right?
Yes, uh, that's with an additional three percent penalty, correct? Yep. No, no, thanks for pointing that out, Chuck. I probably, I probably misspoke. Uh, we'll continue to, to collect taxes through the end of February, and then on March first, everything is turned over to the county. But after Tuesday of next week, an additional three percent penalty goes on to the tax.
Thank. I better check with my wife and see if ours were paid.
You got plenty of time. You got a week.
Okay. Okay, John Stewart.
Couple of things, please. Happy birthday to our supervisor. Uh, several hundred letters will be going out this week, I'm told. Sidewalk replacement. The good thing is that I've been assured by, um, the township, uh, engineer that we have maintained the same terms that were out, uh, last year. We all remember the infamous May rollout. So, uh, I'm glad to know that we're going to be sending on a, another letter, and we're maintaining the same terms. It's my understanding, too, that any one wishing to question, that would have a hearing on March ninth. Is that correct?
As of now, that's the plan. I, I am hoping that we can have a, a more open, um, an accessible, open meeting for that night.
Okay. I, I appreciate Mr. Schrot, although he caught me a half an hour before dinner. We were on the phone last night for a half an hour, and we're trying to lay out the case for need, lay out the case for minimizing liability from slip and fall and the quality of life benefits to, uh, a sidewalk replacement plan. From Bobby Pummel, she would like you to know, and I don't like to be read to, so I'll paraphrase. Fitness classes have, these are her words, "Fitness classes are, have started back with the seniors at Friendship Station." Social programs are coming back. Senior services and various resources have been on the uptick. And finally, uh, a blessing here, partnering with Senior Alliance for the, the need for additional distribution of food. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, there were a hundred seniors that drove through the parking lot and received a hot meal. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, trustee Dorchevitz.
Happy birthday and happy Valentine's Day. That's it. That's great news, John. Ed, thanks for sharing that. I'm glad the seniors got, got meals. That's great.
I looked up the definition of, seriously, I Googled. I looked up the definition of, seriously, I Googled definition of senior citizen today.
And you're one?
Fifty-five.
What is it?
They said it starts at age 55. That makes. So I'm, I'm in trouble.
Welcome to the club.
I am. Audrey Monahan.
I was gonna say happy birthday to you too, Kurt.
Thank you.
Um, you know, join the club of us seniors. Uh, it's okay. We've all lived and survived it. Um, I was gonna say happy Valentine's Day too, just like Bob. And thanks, uh, John, for you, for giving us information about not only sidewalks, but the seniors as well, because that's important in the time that we're in, living in where people have, uh, you know, have struggled to, uh, get a hot meal on their, on their table. So thank you.
Okay. Uh, Chuck Kermy.
Uh, let's back up the sidewalks. The 60-day rule. Are we going to give another 60 days? Won't that mess up our timing to maintain our bid price? Hello, carryover from last year. We may need to discuss that. Cause we've already had one year and now you give another 60 days. What are we going to do with our, uh, bit? We lose our price from last year maybe. And the next thing is if we intend to do some gaps, we need to coordinate that with the repair, I think.
We, yeah, we 100% would coordinate that. Um, right now, the terms of our extension of prices into this year is relying on us being able to start construction immediately in the spring. So if we do push that back, that will affect our pricing, but if we're able to add on additional gaps, I think we can still potentially renegotiate that, but that is, yeah, cause for concern and something to definitely discuss.
Well, I think if you're going to send out a letter tomorrow, if it has the 60 days on it, the boat will have sailed.
It doesn't have the 60 days on it. We were, uh, vague on that point mainly to talk about it, you know, in here.
Well, I want to preserve our price and have a coordinated project. We've had one year to replace the concrete, anybody that was going to do it. So we gotta, and then the gap, the North Territorial Property. I know, Mark, uh, there's one person there, you know. Do I need to go see her and talk to her about it? You know, she doesn't have any right to stop it, but we want to be reasonable. There's only one tree that has to be cut down on private property. All the other trees are on our property, the cemetery. And those are scrubs. So the total of nine trees. And so we have one person whose house is 350 feet back off the road is concerned about it. So tell me what you want me to do. If you want me to talk to the lady or, uh, are we going to send out letters to say we are intending to do this? We need to move. It's winter time now, but in six weeks it'll be warm.
We can make. Jeremy and I will talk and see if you should reach, reach out to that resident or not. I, I've been contacted by another resident as well who, um, who may be of assistance in that area, uh, and I think has, has a pretty decent perspective on what the, all of the neighbors are looking for. So if, if she is the only holdout, then, then if, and if you think you have a an in with her, then, then I think we should pursue that. But let me, let me chat with Jeremy about that tomorrow before we do anything.
Okay. I think the neighbors who live there know her. I don't know her, but so they, we will have a relationship with her much better than me.
Okay.
Yeah, there, uh, the last point I was going to make about the sidewalk was just, there were a number of residents who replaced their own sidewalks. I believe that, uh, I think we received 25 applications or 25 permit applications for it. Almost all of those have come back for final inspections. There's a handful who didn't come in for permits or inspections. So there's a chance that some people are going to get letters who've already done, redone their sidewalk. So we're going to just make sure we get that message out there that if you get a letter and you've already done it, just let us know, we'll come inspect it and remove it from the program. Cause right now I'm fairly certain there are some who didn't come in for permit, who definitely completed their sidewalks.
Okay. Well, you had a lot of people in John Stewart's immediate street that did it, right?
I think those are basically the only ones who are in his neighborhood.
Okay. I, another question. I haven't heard anything, Tom Titterington, about our accreditation that I brought up in the last meeting. Do you know where we are on that?
Yes, uh, we're moving along with it. Uh, actually we had an accreditation meeting today. Uh, there's literally hundreds of policies that have to be, uh, reviewed and approved. So we expect, uh, it to take another six or seven, seven months for us to be fully credited.
Okay, we started this in 2018 or 17, correct?
No, I think we started it last year.
Well, I have a letter from, uh, uh, Linton that was, she worked on it and it was dated January of 2018. No, yeah, 2018, when she was leaving, said that it was going then. So I guess I'm confused on the timeline. That's why I brought it up, because I happen to read her uh, farewell letter.
Right.
When I was cleaning out my office.
Yeah, it's been a long process, but we, we, we did buy some software this year, so I'm confident that it's going to be completed by the end of this year.
Uh, Tracy, since you're here, um, what is the date that, uh, assessment notices are being mailed?
Tracy, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Um, everything is going to the printers this Friday and it is my understanding that they should be mailed out the beginning of the following week.
So that is, let's see. So they're going to be mailed out maybe by the 22nd?
Monday or Tuesday of next week is my understanding.
Oh, okay. Um, what will it take to update our website?
I'm updating the website tomorrow. Uh, as of today, we were still waiting to find out if we were going to be having in-person meetings as well as to get the resolution passed tonight to be able to update all the hardship information online.
All right, well, you can just, if, if you don't have information, just put the dates out there so people can start planning and then the details we can fill in later. So please do that quickly. So that when people are traveling, they can plan their travels if they want to be here for a border review meeting. Cause those dates are established years in advance by the state of Michigan. Correct?
Yes, they can be altered according to resolutions with the township, though. There are different townships that will have them on alternate days, which the state does provide for. The township website will be updated with the dates tomorrow. Again, we weren't sure if we were going to have to have in-person or do Zoom meetings with the board. So allowing for a location or instructions not to be misleading to the residences and was important. We just got some information today. It now makes it a little bit clearer that we can update the website, knowing that we will be allowing in-person meetings.
So the, the decision is in person. Okay.
Yes.
And that'll be about the second week in March?
Yes.
And will a comprehensive report be, uh, submitted to the board after the border review, to the board of trustees? After the border review?
If the board would wish, there's, um, reports done every year after the March border review, which are mandated from the state of Michigan. So if there was anything in specific that the board was looking for, I would just need to know what guidelines you would be looking for.
How many, just, you know, how many applications were submitted? How many were approved? How many poverty applications were submitted? How many, you know, a management report? Something similar.
Uh, all of that is typically reported in the regular March border review minutes. So yes, it's easily done.
Okay. And then you will submit that to the board of trustees to receive and file or just, you can just send it by email, something to communicate with us. That's all.
Sure.
Great. And what day also, what day are you coming to give our present, your presentation to us, Tracy?
Currently, my understanding is that it's scheduled tentatively for March 2nd, if I recall correctly.
Yep, yes. Okay. All right, good. Thanks.
All right, Clerk Vorba.
Everything is good here. Thank you very much and happy birthday.
Thank you, sir. Very good then. I need a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Motion to adjourn by trustee Stewart. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.
All right. Good night.
Good night.